Welcome to the Kansas City Central School Board meeting. We're glad you're here and appreciate your attendance in our school district. An agenda for the meeting is available for you out in the hallway, also up on the floor. Our meeting has four parts. We open with questions and comments from the floor. I'm not going to continue reading all of them. You can look at it there. Our second is the open board meeting. We welcome you to stay and listen to this section. We have an executive session in the portion of the meeting where we discuss legal personnel and student issues. After exec, we will reconvene and may take action on issues we discussed. At this time, we will have questions and comments from the floor. This is your opportunity to bring issues to the board, ask questions, and make comments. Want to do this first? A couple of follow-ups first.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. We should have a buildings and grounds report.
Okay.
Add to the discussion.
Please remind me when we get to the next section.
Or reports, I guess.
Yes.
Reports.
Thank you. We'll do so. Some follow-up? Just a couple of follow-ups from the last board meeting. Ms. Leeson has contacted her folks she knows at Elmira High School, and they have offered us the opportunity to come down and take a look at what they do as a semester high school, just as a first start, and have conversation with us. So we are following up on that from the last board meeting. The second one, purple. We have a purple in the whole.
We have to be dolled up, right?
I thought it was red.
No, the college. Oh, excuse me. I did not know that. Okay. The second thing was there were some questions last time. I think you've brought me enough, I put something in there, about co-teaching and AIS. So we have some additional information for the board on that. That's okay, sorry. And so I'm going to ask Mrs. Schwalbrow and Ms. Ward, as soon as we get in the right spot, just to share some of that additional information that the board has. So just one second, let Patty have a chance to do things.
All right. I wait for them to go.
That's okay. Go down. While, no, down, not the other part. While we're doing that, the other piece that I just wanted to share with the board is I was talking with Frank Clark today, our communication specialist, as we were preparing for tonight's board meeting. And this is just some interesting data since the board has decided to videotape the board meetings. There are approximately 50 hits after each meeting of folks out in the community looking for information and watching the video, which is a really good thing. So I just wanted to share that with you. Frank, he collected that information before he told me that he took a different job. That's okay, yes. Yes, that's a different story for another day.
Okay.
He just watched the videos and said, "No way."
Yeah, no, he just, he had another opportunity within BOSI's, and we are very excited for him. So sad for us, great for him. All right, Mrs. Schwalbrow, if you could just share a little bit?
Excellent. So there was some questions about co-teaching, and so I provided some information from the state, a little information from our statistics as a district. Of course, my computer went into sleep. So one of the things is from the New York State Education Department's field advisory from 2015 regarding co-teaching. I just took an excerpt out for the reasoning behind co-teaching. So it states that students with disabilities have a fundamental right to receive their special education supports in the classroom, and setting that to the maximum extent appropriate includes students without disabilities. So where the push is there to have services provided in a classroom. There was a question about co-teaching and being provided for part of a day versus like a full day. That is acceptable. This answer comes from another state advisory on co-teaching, and it's based on how we determine the length of time for co-teaching. It's based on the student's specific need and skill area. For example, we have some students that require supports for comprehension, maybe supports for answering more complex word problems and math problems and so on. So that's why those classes tend to be where we have our co-teaching support, although we've had it in others as well, based on students' individualized needs. So that provides some information regarding how we allocate services, specifically co-teaching. And my third slide. I'm sorry, I'm on the third one with Dave.
I'm sorry.
There you go. I'm moving very fast.
I just got it.
I was flew now. I took two different school years, and I gave a little snippet. I gave the school year prior to us going to a co-teaching model, which is 2011-2012 school year, and then I compared it to this school year. New York State, the big push is to integrate students as much as possible to the point where in 2015, they started sending out reports for least restrictive environment, meaning how, what percentage of your student's day is spent integrated. So that's become a bigger piece of data for them. So I kind of gave our own Kansas City snippet. So in 2011-2012, that school year, our district primarily provided special education supports in special classes, which that means that they were, students were in segregated classes just with students with disabilities. So they would have a general ed homeroom perhaps, but then they would get their core ELA or math instruction in a separate location away from their gen ed peers. Typical, and I looked at, I looked in general terms, so not to overwhelm with data. Typically, a typical learning disabled student that might have comprehension issues, decoding disability, so generally spent about a third to a quarter of their day in a special class away from their gen ed peers. Okay? So they would be in that smaller class setting. The number of minutes that they would receive instruction from specifically a special education teacher, 135 to 168 minutes a day. You're looking at a full day being about 400 some odd minutes. 2016-17, this year, the primary special instruction, not the total, but primary instructions taking place in an integrated co-teaching setting. So that means we have students with disabilities and students without disabilities being taught in the same, within the same classroom with two teachers, a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher, for many of their core subjects such as math and English language arts. Okay? Now, the typical learning disabled student spends about a tenth of their academic day in a not-integrated setting. That might be in something like a resource room or so on, that would be daily supports to help build their skills. The number of minutes now that students are receiving instruction with the support of a special education teacher, and I changed the word to support because we do have your gen ed and special education teacher, is about 195 minutes on average per day for that support. So I just wanted to provide that data just so you can see. I know the question was, well, where were we before? What did, what model looked like before and as compared to now?
How long is this new model?
The 2011-12 was the last year that we did a full special class. We started the co-teaching model upon the school year.
And your kind of feeling about the results?
I think that the amount of rigor the students are exposed to and the challenge that they've been pushed to has increased exponentially, and sitting in and reviewing now with students, I've been happy with the progress, the academic progress at my New York.
It is not the end.
There you go, one more.
Oh, there's one after that.
One more.
There you go.
It's a follow-up information about academic intervention services or tier three services, and still tier three will be the most significant services where the children are pulled out of the classroom, as opposed to tier two services, which is a small group in the classroom when a child needs a spiral support or needs extra help. And then of course, tier one is just your, more of your just any general child, let's review this, let's focus on this. Perhaps it's the multiplication table that the child uses to do the division or something like that. So currently there are, this is K5s. In our K5 population, there are 56 K5 students and 49 K5 students who are receiving ELA and math. A percentage of my K5 population, that means that 14% of my K5 children are receiving ELA services, 12% are receiving math services, and then you can see the providers listed there below the specific subject that they teach, either ELA or math. Claudia Morris is our full-time tier three teacher who does both math and ELA tier three services. Okay. Next, we will move on to discussion items. This is 17-18 budget. Comes the big sheet. Let's break down some numbers. Okay, so tonight what we wanted to do was talk about debt service and a little bit about employee benefits where we are right now. We are still working on some of the instructional piece. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Schaper to share with you the debt service that's on this sheet.
So this sheet that we just passed out is our long-term debt schedule. Just pulled out a couple of years. It's not the full schedule. It goes on until like 2030. So if you look at the bottom lines on this schedule, it shows what our total principal and interest is for next year and two years out. So, and then we have listed all of our bonds that we have that are listed on the left-hand side. So if you look at the balance of, at June 2018, you'll see that one bond is going to be paid off. And the following year for June 2019, there's another one that's going to be paid off. So we're actually going to have two paid off in the next two years. So our debt is going down.
Is it three? Can you back up? Is three in 19?
One of them's really small, but one next year, two more the following year.
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So yeah, there's two that are going to be paid off in 2019. So we're only going to have, in a couple of years, we're only going to have three... Four, because we rekindle this. So our debt is going down, it's going to keep going down until we get this capital project moving. So that's what this big sheet is showing. And later on, we're going to be talking about what the buildings and grounds can be used to support the school. So that's kind of all intertwined with this. If you go back to our...
We have one.
Yeah. There's also one posted.
There's also one posted everywhere. Do we talk a little bit about how insurance?
Yeah, the only thing that has changed since last time when we looked at this on your screen is the property tax. We filed a tax cap calculation, and before we had 1% in there that we could max at. Now we have 1.5%. So the calculation was done, and the maximum that we've got is 1.5%. So that was one thing that we finalized since the last meeting. And the other thing that we just got were the health insurance rates, and the good news is that what we had budgeted is going to be fine, because I had a big increase in there, and the bad news is the increase was really big. So I don't have to change the budget, because I had already done a really significant increase, and I went through the whole calculation, and what we have budgeted will be fine. I don't have to increase that.
What did it turn up?
15%.
Somewhere between 11 and 15%.
There's premiums.
There's premiums.
Yeah.
For our options. So the day we got it, our bargaining unit also receives that information. So I talked to Mrs. Prime and said, "Please, please take a look at this, and when I come back from Nashville, let's have a conversation." So the increases were somewhere between 11 and 1/2% to 15%. One of the questions that we're trying to find out information about is, our understanding is that being in a trust allows you to pool your costs among many people, a lot of people, but it appears that the rates that they're setting are based on regions. So we're going to have to take a look at that. So I will follow up with Mrs. Prime on that, and we'll have a conversation. Again, Leah's right, the good news is that we had budgeted for an increase, and this should help with the, we don't have to allocate more dollars, but certainly that's something that's difficult for... That was a jump that surprised even us. I mean, really surprised even us. So we'll be talking with the bargaining unit about that.
Bottom line, the remaining gap?
On your sheet.
On the...
Yeah. Yeah, on your sheet.
17-18 budget. Depending on what happens with the salary increases, we'd be anywhere from $345,000 to just under $500,000. And I was just wondering, what is the unrestricted reserve on having right now?
Right now, the amount is 1.6 million at least.
Just as another side note, the last time the finance committee met, they talked about while the property taxes could be a maximum of 1.53% of an increase. While that doesn't sound like a lot, it might actually be a lot. So we have to consider what the community's capacity is, and so that's just one piece. So that was a conversation that happened was just around the capacity for that kind of an increase, which isn't a lot, it's about 60, maybe almost...
It's like $100,000.
$1% is about 60-some for us, so it's about 90 to $100,000 overall budget increase. We also have heard nothing yet from the legislature about what their budgets, and I know, Dr. Ward, you looked today just to see if there was any information. The state legislature has been very quiet about what their work is on the budget. So so far, all we have on the revenue side is the governor's fund.
And their opposition to his eliminating the foundation?
Yes, yes. Any other questions for right now? We'll be back with it again on the 23rd. We'll have another, you want to have another budget workshop? So we'll look at some of the suggestions offered at the last time, and then we'll really delve into the personnel piece, which is the largest part of the budget, really, last piece. We also have got the BOSI's commitments since the last time we talked about the budget, and we are looking at those very carefully and line by line and figuring out what we need to do there. Yeah, we talked about that at finance committee, but we'll come back to it again as well. So that's where we are. It's still in progress. Okay, next we have the BOSI's annual meeting and reception invitation.
Is this a reminder?
It's April 5th. For anybody who's interested, how soon do you have to know about that?
Before next week's meeting, because the cutoff date is the 22nd. I was hoping you could wait until then, but I can't. So just let me know. I'll send out an email reminder. Or if you know where you're going.
Going.
Look, does that include you too?
Well...
That includes you also.
Really? Go to the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
And it's pretty good food. Actually, it's really good food.
Yeah, I'll see. Talk with the rent, see if there's anything going on.
There's a lot of dessert options.
And we usually sit kind of close to that table. I'm going to anticipate we're going to... Like a 5:30 sort of departure from here, for people who would like a ride from here. Yes, we'll provide transportation to them in case. Do you know if they're rescheduling the meeting from February now?
No, they're not.
They're not scheduled.
No, they're not. No, they did send a notice tonight.
Next, our reports. Buildings and grounds, want to go first? Then we won't forget.
Sure.
Okay.
We had a meeting today, and there were two things that we were discussing. The primary thing was our capital improvement project, a major part of which would be reconfiguring the entryways of the high school, middle school, and elementary schools, so that there's more, more secure, or better control over who comes into the building. And so where we are now is that we are in the process of hiring an architecture firm that can actually draw up the proposal, which would then be discussed by the board and the community, and then we would come up with an actual proposal that we would ask the community to approve. We have narrowed it down to three architectural firms based on some preliminary interviews and meetings that Gary May, our head of maintenance and buildings and grounds, conducted. And what we've asked them to do is to come up with some preliminary ideas or concepts for how they would expect to remodel the middle school, the elementary school, and the high school entrances, because we're looking to see who can come up with the most effective and, you know, attractive option. And so what we wanted to throw to the board is, do we want to have a special meeting at which we invite all three of these firms to make a presentation, so that we have the ability to decide which one we would like to employ? So that's, that was point number one, so that we will be discussing. Hopefully pick a meeting night if we decide to do that. The other thing we talked about is the solar, the solar project, which we've been working at for two years now, and has been kind of been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, mostly we're told by National Grid dragging its feet. We're, we're still hoping to get some final figures and all that by the middle of, by the middle of this month, actually. And after that, we'll have to see where it's at and what's going on. Some of the things that we want to look at is, we've been told that because of the delays, we will not be getting as much money back from ICERTA in terms of incentive money, and so that's raised the cost of the project. One of the things we're going to be requiring of SolarCity is their increase in the amount we pay per kilowatt hour by 50%, and we want them to justify that increase based on the increased expenses, rather than they're just looking at another way to stick it to us. So, and the other thing that we're going to be doing is investigating with some other solar providers to see if what SolarCity is proposing is realistic, is it, are we being sulked, or is this really the name of the game at this point? And because we want to have some way to evaluate what SolarCity is telling us. The reason why we're with SolarCity is not because we chose them, but because we were involved in a program called K-Solar, which was a consortium of New York State Power Authority and ICERTA and the State Education Department. Supposedly, this was supposed to grease the skid, so everything would happen really quickly. Well, that didn't happen very much. They greased it with tar instead of grease. And so anyhow, it's been very frustrating, because we were all very excited about it, and also aside from environmental and educational things, it was going to save us money, and now it's, you know, we really need to reexamine it. So that's, that's where we're at, and nothing really to decide at this point, but other than about the meeting with the architectural firms.
Who's posted?
Do we want, we could have just a buildings and grounds meet with them, or I thought it would be good to have the whole board to see the things we could really, you know, make a collective decision about which firm to choose.
What's the time?
They would need at least a couple, three weeks to come up with a presentation for us.
At this point, you have a list of that you can't be in, is that what?
Well, yeah, we have a whole proposal, but most of, most of the things we have on the list are kind of nuts and bolts things, you know, building sidewalk papers, you know, parking lot, fixing some lights, and so things of that nature. The only thing that would really require any, any kind of creativity or, that could have very different approaches, would be the entryways. And that's why we kind of zeroed in on that, to see what different ideas they could come up with and see which was the most attractive and effective.
Well, if you want to have them put a proposal together, maybe we need to get them put in their book, or how much is it going to take you to get a proposal together? Well, Gary, to do a, it's really a presentation and a concept. The idea is to, in fact, Gary said it would probably take two to three weeks for the firms to be able to put something together, because it's, in addition to telling about their firms and the work they've done, we are asking them to do something a little different, which is, all the firms and the finalists have all been to the buildings, so they've all been here. So they, right. Well, they're all, they've all been, they've all come for a site visit, so they have information about the buildings. So what would be their concept on how they might help us address this problem of enhanced safety at the entrances? So they need, they need two to three weeks to do that, which right now puts us more towards... Is that the interruption? First of all? Yes, the end of March, April.
You're stuck with any help?
You're stuck with that anyway. So surely you will be making this decision. Okay. As you are. All right. So three, who just puts us at the end of March? But Mark, you're gone a little bit too.
I'm gone till the 30th.
Till the 30th. So obviously... So first part of April? Yeah, first part of, first to second week of April, perhaps. Knowing that the 5th is the BOSI's board meeting, the 13th would be the board's business meeting, I believe. Because all of a sudden, my phone is increasing. So 13th is the regular board of education. Well, no, we're back to the week or 17th is vacation.
Oh, no, I'm, oh, but that we're on Sunday.
Yeah, then the following week, the week of the 17th. The 17th through the 14th through the 20th, school is on spring break. Unless you wanted to go April 27th, make it the second meeting in April. That's fine, it's worth it. It's Michael's birthday.
If I ever heard a reason.
He's my favorite son. Michael talked about that. Well, I think about a lot, so we're good. It's okay. Do you want to make it part of the meeting? Is that what you're thinking? Maybe? Mrs. Vidgen, suggesting the meeting is the second meeting. Mrs. Vidgen, I'm suggesting the meeting is the second meeting.
It's the second meeting.
Because it's so hard to get everybody together. That's up to you. As a suggestion to the board for consideration. You're always, you're always scheduled to have a meeting.
Do we have, what do we have on our agenda already for that date? Do we know? My only thought is maybe we would potentially start a little earlier at six thirty or something to get that out of.
Well, I don't.
Way ahead of some regular stuff we already have on the agenda? Just a thought. I'm not sure what we have on the agenda. Can we do that as a tentative date and let it by these folks and see if it's going over?
Right. Yeah, we can have Gary reach out to them. Okay.
Okay. As a potential. MCL's from the grounds. Okay, now actually we have a compliance committee. Well, we just kind of, pretty much talked about everything we discussed last week. We've got the solid number on any potential tax increase. The BOSI's budget did come in on the commitment forms, although we hadn't really had a chance. Not we, the compliance committee, but the, Mrs. Grinch tried to review some of the numbers and where those increases were coming from. So as much as it's sort of a solid number, I think we're still kind of trying to look that over and make sure we're comfortable. ERS and TRS were pretty solid with those three numbers. Do you have anything you want to drop in your side as yet? I would say there wasn't a lot to add this time. A meeting again in another, two weeks of things. Hopefully we have some. Hopefully we'll have some more solid information. Sadly. Alright, and we'll keep moving. Policy committee's next. This one we met last week too. And we have a bunch of policies for your consideration. If you had a chance to review them. Discussion about it at this point, or we will, we'll put those later on if you so choose.
Just as a reminder, the, the committee's continuing to work through the three thousand section of the board policy book. That one will be done next. The additional policy, which is the school and food lunch, uh, food, school food service program, is a required policy that has to be in place by the end of the year as a result of our recent food service program audit. Really, all it is, is just formalizing some practices we've already had in place. And the revision is really to the addition of what our charge policy is.
Well, I mean, I just, I read through all of them and I, I really had no disagreement with any of the changes that we proposed.
Any other discussion? Certainly we can discuss that as we go through each one.
Okay.
And there's one in particular we'll discuss it. Okay, and next we'll move on to the vision, vision coalition committee.
Hi, it's Maria Ellen, present for, you have Saint, can you just give them a present? Okay, so the vision coalition, Patty will bring up our little presentation for tonight. And here is a handout.
Thank you.
So in the fall, there's two handouts I'm going to, to share. One was a reminder handout. You know how when you're digging around, you're like, oh yeah, we talked about this. I couldn't find this handout for a while. Back when the board decided that it was time to think about what is held next for the district, we started talking about a process where a guiding group would take a look at collecting information and then bring that information to the board for the board to consider its work in creating a vision. So tonight, the vision coalition is here to share the results of the vision survey findings. So I'm going to get things started and then, yep, do the next one. And then our individual members will talk about their summary findings. So first, we want to give a big shout out and thanks to the folks who came and met eight times on this project. And that would be Mark Davidson, Kathy Dot, Mary Ellen Driscoll, Dina Lenz, Mark Roush, Jennifer Schwabrow, and Stacy Ward. So their, their, the purpose of this coalition was really to be the ambassadors of, oh, and Rachel, I'm sorry, I forgot Rachel. Oh, with Rachel. Yeah, 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 Rachel. So, um, so what we need to do, what we, the purpose was for the vision coalition to be the ambassadors of the survey, to gather community input and collate the information and then sharing the major themes with the Board of Education. So what we did was we put together a three-question survey. That has qualities and skills Kennedy Harry students need to be better prepared for their adult world. What is our district doing well? What changes can our district make now so students are well-prepared for their future? That survey was available in paper and electronic format. It, and our vision ambassadors, as I like to say, were at events, offering people the opportunity to complete the survey, talking to people. So rather than, in addition to just, here's a survey, do you want to take it? The members of the team were actually present at different places or going out to businesses and saying, hey, would you have a few minutes to talk with us about what's going on in the school district? And I think that's really important. So it was a little bit more of a person-to-person contact as well as a, hey, here's a survey. We also surveyed all students in, in grades five through twelve, business and community members. So through all of that, three hundred and fourteen responses were gathered. The responses were collated. It was a little bit unwieldy and people did it in different ways. But just because you all know how much I like colors, I eat out in color-coded mine responses by category. Rachel did a tally count. We had the same question and other people did other formats on how they gathered the data for their questions. So what we chose to do is take the data and then break it up and talk about what each of the themes were that we found in the questions. So what we're gonna do now is have members of the teams for each question talk about the findings. So question number one, which was what qualities and skills do Kennedy Harry students need in order to be prepared for the adult world, was handled by Stacy, Kathy Dot, and Mr. Davidson, who wasn't able to be with us tonight. So we'll turn it over to you guys. And they're just gonna share their results.
As we tallied them, several responses came up, more than once, came up often, and we just took the five that were the most common. Uh, the first one was life skills. This is what the qualities that they felt that the students needed to be prepared for their adult life. The second one?
Communication. And that included both verbal and then digital and written as well, I believe.
Collaboration, being able to be flexible and able to work on a team.
And problem solving dovetails nicely with the collaboration. And problem solving was also creative thinking, creative problem solving or being able to solve problems that were unfamiliar or new to the, to the children or the adults ultimately would face.
And the last one was responsibility slash accountability. And they also had respect in there quite often, which again ties very nicely together.
Thank you. We'll go through our data and then you can ask all kinds of questions. Question number two, which is what is our district doing well to make sure students are prepared for the future? It was Rachel and yes, Kate and I. So Rachel and I are gonna report out tonight, so if you wanna.
Sure.
And Rachel did tally count, which was really interesting. So we were able, you guys did tally count too, right?
Yeah.
So we did some tallying to choose our top areas.
And I called this a warm-up question because this was a, what are we doing right question. So I'm glad I got that. But anyhow, the good news is that um, people are excited about the academic opportunities that we have. That was the biggest, um, county, the, the things that we do academically. PBL, UTEC, Ag, New Vision, BOSI, all of the new courses, music, art, foreign language, those were all plus. Um, something we call cultural map or value. We got a lot of responses about teachers and staff, teacher and student relationships. Those were very positive, seen as a very positive thing. The technology improvement that we've made and what we call social, social emotional support. Yoga in the elementary school, conscious discipline, star program.
So those were, while other things were there as well, these again were.
These generated.
These generated the most things. So these were the big themes of what, of what our respondents said. So our third question and final question. Oh, which was Mrs. Schwabrow and Mrs. Lenz, was what changes can our district make now so that students are well-prepared for their future? So we're gonna ask the two of them just to share. You wanna go over?
Yeah.
She's ready over there low-key by herself.
So ours really went hand in hand with the first question. We saw a lot of similarities with, okay, what do we need in the future? So how can we best do it to support our students so they're prepared? So the first big one was life skills. So a lot of how do you balance a checkbook? How to um, apply for a loan, like those types of things, as well.
Insurance, yes. Things that our kids are not necessarily learning before they leave us.
Yeah, things that I can learn now too. So field trips were huge, real-life problem solving in the classroom. So things are, we're applying it early on, not waiting until later on in life.
And our system of financial math came up, which is a course we do offer in the high school.
Um, technology was a big one. As we know, technology is constantly changing and students need to be able to change with it. So providing more access to students, upgrading our technology continuously.
And the next one was behavior, social emotional support. So teaching students respect, relationships, but also holding them accountable at the same time and letting them know that there's boundaries as well.
Um, and finally, a big theme for us was opportunity and flexibility. So meaning that we're flexible with the students. Students that need to, that can move ahead quicker. Those students who might need more time to, to access skills or build their skills, they can move at their own rate. So a lot of project-based learning type opportunities. So students are able to either accelerate or go at their, at their own pace. So those are the big themes that we found in what can we do for the future?
So again, there is more data mining in there and certainly more specifics, but we felt that by presenting the big picture pieces, we would have that opportunity just to give the board the themes that can be used. So our real, the next piece is really what kinds of questions, clarifications for any of our members might you like to ask? While you're thinking about that, one of the surprises was the life skills piece. That was a surprise to all of us. And that came through very clearly, no matter what your identification was. If you were a student, if you were a teacher, staff member, parent, or community member, that need for students to have real-life things that they can take out into the world. That was a little bit of a surprise to us.
One of the things I was wondering in terms, I mean, I obviously didn't see the responses. And looking at life skills, in addition to balancing your check, checkbook and getting insurance and all that, I was wondering, was there any discussion that you saw in the responses about, you know, becoming more familiar with the world outside these walls?
I think that was highlighted in their field trip. So going and visiting places that would be, that would give them more access to that outside world as well as the technology piece of going and being able to experience other things perhaps through technology.
I was also thinking in terms of people's awareness of what's going on in the world, not just from field trips, but just bringing the issues that are confronting us every day into the school, which I, one of my frustrations, I'll tell you very frankly, in talking with students, especially high school students. And I, you know, I'm very involved, as you all know, in, in a lot of social action and so forth. And I, so I like to talk about issues with students. And um, many of them do not have a clue. And I'm not saying this is a criticism, it's just reality. And, but it concerns me because one of the most important things I feel that we can help students do is when they go out into the world after they graduate from high school, to be able to form their own opinions about things that, that's based on some of the skills we can teach them, critical thinking and so forth. And I don't think we're doing that. I think we're being very much, you know, the walls are literally walls. And what we teach in here is not necessarily related to what's going on outside these walls. And I, you know, I just really, I'm wondering if that was anything that was expressed in any of the kinds of evaluations that we got back, because it's certainly something I feel very strongly about and I would like to see that as part of our ongoing discussions about a vision for our school district.
Some of them did come up into, if I may speak, did come up in the, the first question, that community involvement, empathy is a skill that they do need. But just as a teacher, several children don't have access to newspapers, often don't watch the news if you're thinking a bigger picture. And in the classroom, sometimes you have to wonder if it would be appropriate to show a certain piece, you know, depending on what's going to be shown to, to provide them that background. And of course, I teach elementary, so it's a little bit different in high school. You can have more latitude with that. But in elementary, there's sometimes things that are on the news that probably are not appropriate for, or um, every parent would agree that you were showing that to discuss it. But I do think that they're aware that they need to be a part of the community.
In quickly looking at, we've sent out some links, and I'll send it out again tomorrow, that you can look at all the responses. So just kind of looking quickly, there's a few in question one, like Kathy was, like Kathy was stating. And then in question three, well, there's at least make civics a mandatory class. So there's at least one, one that I can see in a quick scan. So while it's present, it, it wasn't present, I guess, enough to make that, to make the list. I would also say though, if you're thinking about communication and problem solving, there's, there's a place there for those two things that maybe as you think about it, can weave in some of those civic engagement, civic involvement types of pieces.
I was thinking too, sometimes we have responses where people give an adjective like a character trait. And curious was in there, so I don't know if you would.
Curious.
Curious was a, like when you mentioned empathy and being respectful, sometimes they were um, not statements that you should do this or you should have that, but like trait.
I think that, you know, like a lot of the things where they talked, that they raised things like, you know, problem solving and so forth. I just think one of the, I mean, I'm not, I think this really touches on a lot of great, you know, points that we really need to work with. I just think it's a question in my mind of how do we implement these in a way that is the most meaningful to the education of our students? You know, for instance, when you're doing problem solving, are these kind of abstract problems that don't really have anything to do with the world we live in? Or are they problems that really have an impact? You know, I mean, you know, and have a relationship to what's going on out there. You know, and I think that that really will be part of taking this and making it into a, you know, a kind of roadmap for the school district, the how do, how do we use these skills that people identify as being, you know, critical and important?
Can I say something as a committee member?
Oh, absolutely.
As a committee member who was not at the last meeting, so I mean, I've seen in this process that, you know, this is just the beginning of identifying, you know, this was one part of the process, and maybe we could talk more about what's to follow from this, so that some of those issues you'd like to explore more. There, I assume, are opportunities to go deeper and get more discussion as well, hopefully from the community on those topics?
What's the next step for the committee and for the board?
Great, so at this point in time, and this is kind of, we've gone off a little bit from our original roadmap, which is fine because your road should take you where your road should take you. That, we had talked at the, at the committee level really about taking these findings and perhaps having a community forum about them and having some discussions about that, and I could see how that could be structured so that people would have opportunities to have table conversations, excuse me, around some of the findings at a deeper level to gather more information. At some point in time, the information all needs to come back to the board for the board to create the vision with it. So the question is, does it make sense, and I appreciate Mary Ellen's point, to think about offering a community forum so people can come if they want to dig deeper into some of the findings, have further discussions and gather some additional input? Again, a survey is one thing, our conversations, we learned a lot, because as we were out there being ambassadors and handing out some little trinkets or at holiday times, we're handing out candy canes or chasing people down who were recent graduates at squirting events that they came to. So that was, that's one way to do that, but there certainly is another way to do that as well. So at this point, it really is up to the board to think about what might be the next step. How would you like to gather more information or go deep on some of the things that we have found, that the findings are?
Well, I would just, if the committee would be willing to do it, I would be glad to turn it to you. No, but I really think that at this point, I think we've done a really good job of surveying and getting some feedback from our community, which is what we were looking for, and I applaud and thank the committee for the hard work that you did in accomplishing that, because I know it was not just a question of putting in an online survey, you did a lot of visiting and all that. And so the next thing I would like to task you with, if you're willing to take it, is to say, okay, now that we have some of these things that people identified as things they'd like to see part of our school system's future, how does this translate into changes that we would make or directions that we would take as a school district for the next five years, let's say? I mean, it's nice to say, well, these are all things that people would like to see, but what would we have to change? What do we have to do to implement this vision? You know, programmatically, structurally, financially, any which way that, you know, how does this become a reality? Because that's really why we started this process, because what we said is that we would like to have an idea of where we would like to be five years from now, and so that we can figure out what to do to get there, so that we can make rational and sensible decisions that will move us in that direction, rather than just having abstract decisions, you know, oh, this looks good or that looks good. But why does it look well, it sounds good? No, it's helping us to get where we want to be as a school district. And that, that was the whole thinking behind this vision thing when we first proposed it and asked you to do all this hard work. So that would kind of, in my mind, be the next step is, okay, how does this become programmatic for our school district?
To me means we get the administrators and the teaching staff, the committee, if the committee still chose to stay together and be a part of it, that's more just from the board and whoever committed.
Well, the staff was also a part of this, so this was everybody. But if you were going, and if you wanted to dig deeper to do some, to do a forum, would include all those groups and everybody? They've been included, everybody's been included all along. So I guess the question is committee people. Ready to continue on, if the board would like that? And we can talk about how to make that happen then.
Yeah, I mean, I see like an example of this is, I mean, there are schools that have, like, take these points and flesh them out into 35-page documents that, you know, really go in-depth about what they're hoping to achieve. You know, and also, like, as a board member, you, you know, you might be looking at the issue of life skills, and you've talked about having a senior internship, and, you know, that is, you know, in line with this vision. So whether, so I see it as both a way for the community and the board to, you know, flesh this out, but also then keep turning back towards it as you're proceeding in your decision-making.
So our next step then would be to figure out, would be to establish some structures and some processes for more in-depth discussion. That would also lead to what are some actions we could do that will help move us in these directions within the next five years? So I think there's a dual purpose in my head. One is to really gather some more, to go deeper with some of these ideas. The second thing is then to put some concrete actions around, and then refer back to the board.
I think not only refer back before, I would really want to make any definite, you know, concrete decisions. Once the vision committee comes up with some of this structural or, you know, concrete kinds of ideas, I would like to see the stakeholders to have an ability to discuss those ideas and have input into them. For instance, that students should be both involved in the vision committee, but also have the ability to evaluate the changes and the direction that we're proposing. The staff as well should have, and both administrative as well as instructional should have the ability to see what is being proposed or planned and have their input into it in there. So that really becomes the product, not just a board decision, but the board reaffirming in a way what the whole institution and the community wants to see for this.
So we did the survey, right, and those four, the forum idea, which is really the conversation idea, was one idea that the group had come up with. So we'll go back and talk about maybe some, maybe there's other ways as well.
Thank you, thank you. We'll get a meeting date set here soon, we'll see what works for everybody.
Next we have our student representative.
All right, so this week we had a junior and senior meeting about prom, and we just got up, we all got an update on that, and I think everyone's clear on what's going on. Not, I mean, they, maybe it could be like Seattle sent out, but maybe that'll come like in time. The senior stayed and to review the information about the class trip, and it's good to get that rolling and get that in the heads of everybody, so there'll be minimal confusion when it comes to the date and when it's actually happening and what we're doing there. Also, we had our Star Activity, the teams are finalizing their projects on how to improve school culture and how to, you know, make us more of a family here at Kendra. And the Kendra game show was great, so, and that was a great way to come back from a weekend and get rejuvenated and back into school. And did you guys figure out anything for me to do around school? And if you didn't find out, so I'm ready, and ready and willing to do things.
You can help us with the vision stuff, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want to show me any questions?
I also suggested that maybe if we're going to look at the semesterized school.
Semesterized high school?
We talked about maybe Lucas, he wanted to go so he could ask questions from the student.
Absolutely.
Could we all see it sort of from the old.
So Mr. Game Show, how'd it go?
It was great, it was hilarious.
Is that video somewhere?
I don't know, it might be.
I don't think they taped the whole thing. I have some pictures, I know that the Sammons has some pictures. I don't know if she did any like live streaming stuff. We did tweet it out, I mean, personally, I have autographed photos. I mean, not everybody got them, so there was a little.
Pretty exclusive.
That's right. The best had to be when Mr. Horrender slash Dean Tension, at the end, before he gets me his picture, read to the audience what it says, which is strive to be your best and also. Yeah, it was good, it was good. We had a good time.
Thank you. Well, Lucas, I'll follow up with you and to be, to help us with digging deeper on some of the, on some of the vision questions, okay? What?
Phil, sit on that.
Yes, so as you know, I was invited by Bosse to be part of the Academies of Nashville Study Visit this week, Monday through. I got in at 10:30 last night. And really, the purpose of the conference is thinking about transforming secondary education. So that took a while, but we have it up here as well. So what I just really wanted to do was share with you some highlights of it. If you want more, there is more information, I have copious notes in handout for you. But let's talk a little bit about the purpose of this visit, which was really around transforming secondary education. So in Nashville, they are celebrating their 10th year in the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools, taking 12 of their 25 high schools and creating within them some career academies. But the reason why, and some of the structures that they're using, makes sense no matter whether or not you have an academy. So this is a different model of secondary school transformation, a little bit of a different model from like the PT, from the PTEx or the AGEx. Although project-based learning is still involved, it is a transformation of high schools from the inside out, of typical high schools, of high schools that look like every other high school from the outside, but that's not what's happening on the inside. So one of the things that happened in Nashville was that in the accountability indicators that we all are being responsible for, in both Tennessee and at the federal level, they were in danger of being taken over by the state. So the high schools came together at the high school level and said, we recognize we're not meeting the needs of our students. And apparently, eight of their principals went to a conference and came back and said, this is it. This is one of the ways we can do this. Their Board of Education, their board president spoke the last day I was there, was very much behind this idea of we are going to meet the needs of today's students, and I know I say this all the time till people want to cry, but that I say it, but the kids today are not us, minus Lucas, because he is them, and they are not learning the same way we all did. It is not, that is not, that structure that we have really isn't appropriate for 21st century learners in a lot of ways. So what they also did then was coordinate this idea of these academy high schools with their district vision and goals. And I'll show you what the five characteristics are in a minute, but they have some very, they created some very clear things of what they want for outcomes for their graduates that's based on their district vision. And their district vision really has two, their district vision has connected to two big goals. One around literacy, which is a K-12 effort, and one around graduation. They also have, these academies have big focuses on career and college readiness, that's part of the district vision. And here's what's neat, within these high schools, they have all the same course offerings. They have AP classes, they have university in the high school, they have college in the high school classes, they have a lot of things. What they've done is created a lens around a career path, so I'll share with you what some of those are. They also have some very, very strong business partners. Okay, let's go. So up on their wall, which is why this is a little shiny, they have these things posted. I visited two high schools, McGavick High School, which is the largest high school in Nashville with 2,500 students, which is like one and a half times the size of our whole district, and Glencliff High School, which is a smaller high school, but is the most diverse high school in the Nashville system, where they have 40 countries and 30 languages represented. So their five characteristics include, I can't even read that first, it's yellow. A plan for post-secondary education and career, whether that's college and career. At least 21 composite score on the ACT. Now that in Tennessee is one of their benchmarks. We have the Regents here, they have the ACTs and the SATs. At least one course completed online through either full online or blended learning, and we've talked about this, that we're going to have to do that real soon here, because that's the real world. A work-based or service-learning experience, they have a senior year capstone project, which we'd be very excited because we've talked about that too. College credit and/or for some of the career academies, nationally-recognized professional certification. So the idea is no matter what your pathway is, no matter what your dream is, you have some stuff to take with you as you move forward out of high school. So they look at high school really as moving on past 12th grade, how are we helping students? So when I, as we were, as we were touring these high schools and listening to people talk, there are some big concepts, some big foundation concepts, and you see the first one. If I could boil it down to one word said three times, it's about relationships, 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 and it is the relationships for all students. Relationships, student to student, student to teacher, student to administrator, teacher to administrator, family to school, the whole ball of wax. They really focus on relationships. But then they also do some other things. They are looking at personalized learning, they are looking at smaller learning communities. Again, in a high school of 2,500 students, you can get lost. They are looking at, and I love this phrase, I so want to steal it, student voice and student choice, which is really interesting. Innovation in instruction, not only is it about project-based learning where the expectation in the high schools are that you do two PBLs a year, that's their current expectation, but that there is also strong interdisciplinary study among. Now, we call it English, Math, Social Studies, Science. In Tennessee, they call it MESS, Math, English, Science and Social Studies. So they call it a MESS, and they refer to it all the time as the MESS. And it really wrapped around four Rs. Rigor of instruction, that we are giving instruction that's appropriate to students at their level and stretching them and helping them grow, whatever that looks like. Relevance, believe it or not, for this 21st century learner, they want to know and need to know the why. And they don't listen to the, well, because I say so. Right, Lucas? Yeah, I know, I know. And that's a big cognitive shift, and one of the things in talking to the teachers, because we had an opportunity to talk to some teachers, was that was the biggest shift for them, because it, when we went to school, we.
Some of us were here.
Went to school, you learned it because your teacher told you you had to learn it. But as a general rule, 21st century learners want to know why. They want to know what the connection is and the relevance is, because that's really important to them. The career pathways as a structure helps give that. The career pathways as a structure helps give that to students. And then the last one is readiness, you need to be ready for your life. So, at McGavick High School, and then I'll pass around some of these things, all the high schools start with the freshman academy. We have the freshman seminar, which we started this year, but as I met some of these sessions, madly tweeting, or tweeting, texting Ms. Gleason and Mrs. Lenz, much to their horror because I'm being so excited about things. The freshman seminar is all about career exploration and college exploration. So, literally, in McGavick and in Glencliff, the two high schools I went to, their freshmen are segregated. At McGavick, our student tour guide saying, we don't come down here very much as upper class, but they were seniors, they're like, we just keep the freshmen here and we try not to come down this way. So, they asked them to do it. It's very cute. By the way, they were delightful freshmen, I talked to a couple of them. But in, in that time, they go to a career fair, they go to a college fair, and they go to visit colleges as part of their freshman year experience. So, they're figuring out what they want to do. Now, at McGavick, they have, and every, by the way, every one of these academy high schools has different pathways. They have the Academy of Life Science and Law, they have the Academy of Digital Design and Communications, they have the Academy of Hospitality, Business and Finance, and the Academy of Aviation and Transportation, and they do have a plane in their school. I know, it's very cool. At Glencliff, they have the Academy of Business and Innovation, the Academy of Medical Science and Research, and the hands-on Nashville Academy of Environmental and Urban Planning. So, every high school has some academies. So, if you can flip to the next one, because I think that's it, nope, flip one more and then come back. Here we go. This is, I'm sorry, this is really bad, this was the picture on the screen from the opening night, so you know how sometimes you can't get it real quick. So, at ninth grade, they do all that career exploration fair and the college visits. At 10th grade, then, they choose their academy. And at that point in time, they do an industry field trip. So, with their business partners, they're going out into the field. In 11th grade, you have a job shadow. In 12th grade, you have your capstone project, which may or may not involve an internship in one of these business partner industries. So, in talking to, they did a student panel, so some of the great questions that came up were, well, what if you get into one of these, at McGavick, we have the student experiential learning piece, what if you're in something that you decide is not your path? One of the great things about how they have this structured is that in addition to these career pathways, courses, which is really just the lens through which you look through things, they also have general courses, they have band chorus, orchestra, family and consumer science, they have all the regular high school courses. But they have enough extracurricular activities that if you're interested in something outside of your pathway, you can go do that. So, here's something that's really good example, I had a lovely conversation with a delightful young woman, senior, who's in the Digital Design and Communication Program of Study. She said, I am so grateful for all the opportunities I've had, you know, Nashville has a lot of service industry, a lot of, you've got Opera Land, you've got Gaylord, they just have, you've got music everywhere, they just have all kinds of good stuff. So, she's had the opportunity to do some communications work, she said, but you know what I've learned, that's not what I want to do with my life, what I want to do with my life is be an English instructor. So, now, she writes for the school newspaper, she takes, she does some other things to help her in that pathway, she's already been accepted at college, and she already knows what she's going to do. For some students, the pathway is the pathway, so one of the other students talked about wanting to be a veterinarian, and they do have the animal, their life science and law has pre-veterinary science as a part of it, which by the way, the principal's dog gets to come to school every day. I know, which, I know, which makes, uh-uh, look at over here, everybody's like worried if I say that because I have surrounded my own people. Everywhere, not me, but everybody else. But anyway, the, the student said, I have the opportunity, as an inner-city student, I've been on job shadows, I've done some, I did a field trip, I'm doing some job shadows to be exposed to the world of veterinary science, and he's very excited about that. So, it's very cool to think about that and how they structure that. Can we go back now? Here's what they did, and I think this is really interesting, and I, and the McGavick, both principals of both schools were really cool, but here's what they did. They took the nurturing relationships of elementary school, you know how we love our babies at elementary school. They paired it with the whole middle school teaming concept, working in teams and in cohorts, and then they applied all of that to the high school content to support today's students. So, here's what it looks like with the pictures of the schedule, because I did go to a scheduling mini-session so I can send pictures to Mrs. Lenz and Ms. Gleason. What they do is, if, say you're in aviation, your mass, math, English, social studies and science content is taught through the lens of that academy pathway. And what the teachers do is they sit down together once a month, and they have team time, those content areas, and they say, here are the standards I'm teaching this month, here is where all the cross-standard and cross-curricular connections are, and then they go back out and teach that with their students. Okay, you don't have to have an academy to do that, and as a matter of fact, the ninth grade, the freshman academy, just does it for the ninth grade students, just does it based on the ninth grade standards. But it's that idea of helping the adults come together to really look at what are we teaching together so that we can go back out and say to our students, well, here's how it applies in English, but did you know there's a connection in social studies, there's a connection in math, there's a connection in science. It is extremely intentional. So, now I want to go to the last piece, which is what had to happen with the adults. The professional development around this is huge. So, they have worked on teaming, helping adults know how to work together. Our teachers, because again, in education, we, most of us, if we've been doing this a while, have been brought up to be very isolationist, I go in my classroom, I close my door. They have busted through that, that kind of way education has been. So, they teach the teaming, they run an AB block schedule, eight peer, a blocks, AB block schedule, I gave it to these guys, but within how they do the schedule, they also have, because I'm going to share with you in a minute the things we have in common, a middle part of the day, they call it homeroom and advisory, we might call it guided studies, where some of the exact same things are...
My dad smiled.
I know, she's very excited. They, but they have done a ton of teaming around, I'm sorry, excuse me, PV around teaming, around teaching in the block, around what the standards are, around how you bring all that together. And then, in the summer, the teachers go on externships. They go to the businesses to learn what businesses are like and what's happening. Because quite frankly, I love school so much, I'm only going to talk about myself, I have never left school in 56 years, well, 55 years or however, you know, 50 years. I've never left school. So, what do I know about what happens in the world of aviation? What do I know about what happens in the world of hospitality? I don't necessarily because that's not my experience. So, that's one of a key piece to what they do, they send teachers on externships. So, that, that really was just a cool piece, but what, what happened was, the board decided this was the way we were going to go, the district administration said, all right, we're going to do it, and over 10 years, they have built structures that have bestowed the people. And I think this is a key success of theirs. They have had three superintendents, not one principal of the original 12 from 10 years ago, these academies is still at the academy. They're not. They've had turnover of staff, but yet the academies continue. Okay, let's, let's go, go. And here's what they've seen. They've seen an increase in graduation rate, and again, we're talking about Nashville, so you know it's a major metropolitan area, with a ton of construction going on, by the way, that's a growing area. They've seen an increasing graduation rate of about 20 points over 10 years, which may not seem like a lot to us, it is a lot to them. They've seen, yeah, 20 percentage points, yeah, for 10 years, an increase in their ACT scores, remember, that's their state required, one of their state requirements, kind of like our Regents. They have seen a decrease in dropouts, but please don't think it is all sunshine unicorn and bunnies, but they have seen a decrease in discipline. They still have them, and they'll tell you, they've got the hall walkers, which kind of sounds like a zombie a little bit when I hear that. They still have students who challenge them, but it is, it is a much smaller number because students are engaged and active participants in their learning rather than being receptive recipients. So, that's the difference. So, that's where they are after 10 years. While I have more, go ahead, while I have more, I did a chart, because I got so excited, we all know how I get about things. So, I did a chart, and the chart really was, because what I was most excited about was that we are already doing some of these things that make a difference for kids. So, the chart, I'm going to share with you the crossover actions that we're doing, but the chart has four columns, things we're already doing, which I was sharing a lot with Ms. Gleason and Mrs. Lenz, things we can improve on, easy things that we can add or shift, and then longer-term kinds of projects. Again, you don't have to have an academy necessarily or a pathway, but that would be a really cool thing to do. What you can do are all of these other things. These are not things that are unattainable by any high school, including ours, or any secondary, I say secondary education because I immediately started thinking of the connection with middle school as well. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the things they have that we also have, and where all of this comes together. Their homeroom advisory is our guided studies, and guess what they do there? Clubs and activities and help from teachers and lunch. That's unfamiliar to me. And it's...
That way, that was so original.
I did, well, you're not mean, sorry. And it's in the middle of the day. They had, they have AP and college or university in the high school courses, and again, the expectation is everybody's trying something. They have program planning. I have not yet given it to them because I really don't want to. There's a program planning sheet that they use, which we have something like that, I know, but this is really based on their academy, on their academy work. They, we have a freshman seminar, they have a whole freshman academy, I am really, really intrigued by that idea of freshman academy. They, they noticed that as they were doing this, not all of their students had access to all the courses, and that they might be holding some of their students back. So, instead of having a separate honor track, they embed their honors in the regular courses, it's honors by contract, and students have the opportunity if they want to work towards it. And they have continuous improvement through target setting. That's results first, that's all of the results first work, is this continuous improvement. What I do want to pass around, just so you can see it, is McGavick's freshman, I'm not feeling... Their freshman academy smart goals, and I just would like to pass that down there because their freshman academy has its own set of ways of being. They will tell you they are a work in progress, they will tell you 10 years in, there are still things that they are learning, and they will tell you that it will never end for them, ever. But they do say that more students are more successful, and as they leave, they can go and do greater things in their life. So, if you want to catch some snippets of some things, if you go to YouTube and you just say, you just research and search the Academies of Nashville, you will find a multitude of different, piece, of different little YouTube videos. So, we can go to the last one. So, here's what I think. I, I think two things. One is I would love to share this information, I've already talked to Ms. Gleason about it with the secondary staff, and say to some folks, there are some things in this chart we can do, that wouldn't, seriously, that are very doable for us, the four, this, this chart. And so, with our results first team, who by the way, have already talked about some of these things on this chart at the secondary level, let's see what we can do to, to be, to continue to add to this column of things we were already doing that are transformational. So, that's first thing. The second thing is I really think that as we consider the district's vision, we need to consider secondary education transformation as part of the vision. And when we look at what folks are saying about what we need to do next, and I haven't yet gone to that question three and really dug into the individual responses and kind of juxtaposed it against this, this information, I think there'll be a lot of the same. And I, I just want to close by saying one thing they're adding next year to the 10th grade, in Glendale, the second high school I went to, Glencliff, they are adding, they currently didn't, they didn't have their structure, this 45-minute homeroom guided studies, what we call guided studies in the middle of the day, they're adding it next year in the 10th grade, they're adding a course called personal finance. Yeah, it's just so funny, it's just, isn't it interesting? And as they were talking about, they were saying, well, because our students are saying we really need this kind of real-life learning as part of our school. So, that was, the, the visit was one evening, two full days, and this is, I could give you much more information. This was as succinct as I could get it in my enthusiasm over the visit. We are looking to perhaps, perhaps send a couple of people in the fall just to see it, they'll do another study visit in the fall. One big idea is that the genesis of this was thinking about how small schools in our area, Canjo, Foreplay, OESJ, might work together to give students more opportunity by working together, can we do more than by working by ourselves? So, we have ventured around the idea, it's still very much an idea kind of phase of could we do some kind of, whatever works for us, academy that each high school might have something, and we could share students for the academy part of it and do perhaps some career pathways. So, that's something we're still continuing to look at. Part of this trip for us was really just to learn about what this pathway concept was. I walked away saying, yeah, we could do that, but we can do all this other stuff too. It'd be great to do a pathway, we're going to pursue that, but if not, there's a whole lot of other things we can do that are really transformational that don't necessarily require a pathway. So, what questions can I answer?
I was wondering, do they have any community service requirements for graduation?
I don't know that, I don't know that that's part of, I don't know that, they didn't talk about it, but I can find out, because everybody gave you your card and they're like, call us, email us, please, we want to, I mean, they really are into sharing. So, let me find out. Other questions or thoughts or... It does.
Sounds like the future.
Sounds like the future? Can I quote you on that? Okay, good. I will give you all...
It's amazing how many of these things we've talked about and talked about and talked about, you know, have started implementation here.
We, we are already doing some things.
We are.
So, I think we really need to celebrate that, but now we also, but here's a roadmap for what else, for what else we might do. And so, it would be great in the fall to, in my head, in the fall, what I'd like to do is of course send Ms. Gleason, Ms. Lenz, because they really get to go to the scheduling and understand it much more than I do, send a couple of teachers, maybe a board member who might want to go and, I, I think it's like everything else, you have to experience it to really get a sense of it, of what it's like. And they have what they call student ambassadors, so everywhere we went, the students met us, they had jackets that they, student ambassador jackets that they wore, I mean, it was really cool. And when we went to the classrooms, a student would come out of the classroom and tell us about what they were doing. So, at the, at McGavick, at the freshman academy, they were stuck in this little UTE, they weren't allowed to leave the UTE, ever, I don't think, but...
They were upperclassmen.
Yes, they were upperclassmen, never, like, the seniors were nervous that they were really in there, no, they were fine. But they took their science and did an integrated science and had it all about animal science, which I thought was fascinating. So, however they were meeting their science standards in ninth grade, it was all around animals, so they had little bunnies and little cages, and it was just really interesting, it was a different, they think really differently about the standards and about the content, they aren't really, they really are looking for those other opportunities. It was just kind of cool.
Did you, Matt, did you tell you what the best music venues were?
They did not, but I did have one young lady say, well, I am in visual, in the visual and audio production, she said, but someday I'd really like, you know, to be a singer here in Nashville, but I also want, know that I have to have something that would be a job, so I'm in audio production so I can work in that, that job. No, they did not tell me that. I don't think they're old enough to do some of the music venues. So, there you go. So, that's what was going on. And again, if you want to have a more in-depth conversation or want to know more, just give me a call, we'll set up a time, we'll sit down and have some, you know, coffee, and I can tell you even more. But I, I do want to run around and talk to some, some students and say, hey, you know, I want to visit this school, this is what they did, what do you think? Just because I think it'd be interesting to get their perspective as well. Just because I think it'd be interesting to get their perspective as well.
Okay, moving forward, if we have a number of items to approve, if somebody wanted to do a consent agenda on that, we call. Our consent, if we wanted to do a consent agenda, item A through F.
Second.
Discussion on those items?
Oh, I said one small thing in the minutes of 216.
What did I miss?
Mariella Driscoll is listed as a board member and then there's another board member section that has Cheryl in it. And Scott is nowhere to be found.
No, I guess not. That's what happens when you cut in pace from the last.
You're there, but listen, I'm a center member category.
We have on, at the top it says members present and then.
Right, I saw that one.
Members present.
Oh, this should be absent.
And Mariella Driscoll.
Mariella was in there.
Mariella was in there.
I know, I saw that, I caught that this night.
Oh, I was absent, that's the one I was.
That's the only word.
Right. But I couldn't read the words.
I read the word that I heard.
All right, I got it, just a little.
I was just confused.
What else you got?
That was it.
Hold on a second.
I have another, check, you told?
Well, I asked you to and then Rachel raised your hand. So if you want to, you said no and then, if you want. Rachel, go ahead.
I was just wondering about the school calendar, but I know it's just a draft at this point of how comfortable we were with vacations and so on.
As comfortable as we are any other year.
In particular, due to the snow, there are more snow days.
There's same number of snow days.
Why do I always think there were only two issues?
No, there was three. There was three we used for, we used, okay. That's why we're all coming back on April 21st. It's what the calendar says at the bottom.
Graduation is the 22nd, there's still Regent's rating day going on?
That's always, that's always.
Oh, really? And it was over like at least the day before?
There's always something right over there.
So there's always that question that, oh, good god.
They spread them out so much this year, this June, I think there's 1 a.m., 1 p.m. They don't, they're very rarely doubling up anymore. So they spread it out through that whole. Which is good, because then you're not dealing with kids who are, if you have a conflict because you're repeating, then you're sitting for six hours to take two exams, or if you have double time, 12 hours. I mean, not that that, you know. It's the potential part.
I've done that. That's it, my question was round.
We, as per the bargaining contract, I sent this off to them and said, please take a look at it. They did, they came back and said, nope, it looks fine. Some, the calendars really are repetitive, like every few years you get the same calendar. This was a repeat of.
It's probably like five or six years ago, yeah.
So it's a pretty standard calendar. And really what we just need to watch and hope is that Mother Nature, which has been, you know, last year we were giving back snow days. So it's been that kind of variable. I don't think there's any way to plan for it better. It is great. Okay, Mark, what else?
Okay, bills. On the general fund for February 10th, under 52699, we paid $32,000 to Cooper Irving and Savage, which looks like another law firm, and I was wondering why we're using another law firm and we already have one on the contract.
That was the tax refund you had to pay for the, the property. Yeah.
The re, what are they?
I know, I came in properties.
I know, but. The assessment, reassessment.
Yeah, I went to court, you know, went to court and.
So this was the owner of that property that we had paid?
Well, it's his lawyer.
It's his lawyer.
Yeah. So we're not, we're not hot, double booking in law firms.
I guess it's fair.
Well, I mean, I just saw another law firm get $32,000. 224 under general fund, Family Counseling Center, 5700, who is that?
That's our contract with Lindsay Hodge to do crisis counseling through the Community Schools A.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I.
I know.
I know what it is, but.
It's okay.
Okay, and the cafeteria budget, I just noticed it said Upstate Niagara Cooperative. Is that a farmer's cooperative?
It's actually where they get the milk from. It's Mohawk dairy, I believe, but like it's, they're got bought by this.
It's just a new name, I haven't seen it before.
It's them, but they, I keep careful, I just look state there. But it's milk.
Moving right along, treasurer's report. I couldn't make any sense out of the school lunch. It didn't seem to add up.
So now on the bills, you're on the treasurer's report?
Now we went to the treasurer's report.
Okay, okay.
And there's the one for the school lunch.
Page five.
School lunch.
Is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't make any sense out of these, the figures didn't seem to add up to me. And I was just wondering if you could just.
I'd have to check it, just by looking at it like this, it looks okay?
I mean, for example, at the top it says the total available balance at the end of the preceding period is 44,955.
Yeah.
And then the total available balance is 39,899, 37,899. So what, how, why is that different than the top figure?
Yeah, about standing.
Because it started at 44,000, we added receipts of 35,000 and then paid out 42,000 to come up with the 37,899.
I just had a hard time making sense out of that. That sounds like okay. And then the last thing on the budget hearing, first sentence of that, it says for the proposed 2016, 17, it could be 17, 18.
We're not to the budget hearing yet.
I thought that wasn't part of the sentence.
No, it's not, it's in the next one.
Oh, sorry.
I think they count the names.
All right, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just think we were meeting very much, we're trying to do it together.
So would you like to use the minutes as a separate?
Yes, please.
Can we do that separately?
Okay, which ones?
Motion to approve the minutes from, we could do, well, we have a motion already on the table. Amendment motion to not include the February 16th minutes. We'll do that as a separate one.
Actually, budget, budget hearing is part of this A through F.
Where?
Annual budget hearing notice.
That's under approvals.
That's in, under, that's under numbers.
No, we're doing consent approvals of the ball.
Oh, I.
That A through F.
Got it, sorry.
Okay.
So any further discussion on A through F? Leaving out February 16th minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Need a motion to approve the February 16th?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Good? Okay, then we have items to approve, A through G. We'll start with A. Okay, that's all right, we're all on the same page now. Need a motion to approve the nomination of John.
Motion.
To Bozey Cordeback.
Motion.
Discussion on this? I think it's always a piece. Wants to stay involved, I think that's great.
He's just doing it for meals.
There are two Bozey seats open.
You get paid for Bozey seats?
No. You get dinner, you get dinner.
You get dinner every meeting.
Every meeting.
Every meeting?
Every meeting.
Nice. Yeah. I don't have slinkies and they're acting like it's not this time.
Did you leave me one?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
This is the first meeting I've had.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Go, John. Speaking of that, we have to vote on that. April something?
April something.
Yeah, April 21st or something.
We have to get together and vote for it. As a board at some point, like later in the year.
Need a motion to approve the continuation of combined wrestling funding cross country program to Fort Plain. I'll make that motion. Second. Discussion on this?
It's just continuation of the modified, or excuse me, the combined sports we have with Fort Plain. Both districts are interested in continuing the partnership.
Any changes in coaching at this point, or not that we're aware of? Staying as it is?
Well, this is for fall and winter sports, so we haven't.
Too early to tell.
It's too early to tell, yes.
Any further discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We have an application for renewal of modified JV football of Fort Plain.
Motion.
Discussion on this?
Last year was our first year, working with Fort Plain in merging, or combining football. It's considered a combine, like a merge sport, they don't have it, but it's still considered a merge sport. It was very successful. All parties are interested in going to hear too.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We have an application for combined varsity football report. Okay, 22nd, motion to approve. Discussion on this one?
So we had such a great year last year at the modified JV level that all parties are interested in looking at combining at the varsity level. We were hopeful that by combining and how we look at sides of school, it would move us into a different class, into Class C. It does not, we will remain in Class D.
Really, even with both schools?
Yes, even with both schools.
That's how shocked I'm.
I know. What we are talking about doing for next year is obviously still maintaining. Football is a very expensive sport, so one of the things. Look at Mrs. Schaefer when I say that, right, Mrs. Schaefer? So one of the things we discussed in our conversation between Canjo and Fort Plain was to get a label, a label for the helmet. So we're talking about doing that so that they'll be, again, we kind of use the CFP idea. So they're, we're looking at doing something like that for the football helmets that would, that in the varsity level indicated it was a merge sport. But not necessarily all the uniforms. Oh, gosh, no, no, we can't afford that.
So it's not even a daily share with all schools?
Yes, there will be some cost sharing that will be involved. And there was this year, by the way, they paid for one. There was some cost sharing this year, we'll formalize it for next year. So the athletic directors are in the process of working on that.
What would happen after this point, after like both boards will approve it, we would have to go to the section two?
Then it goes to section two. All of the, all of the application for either renewals or initial combined sports have to go to the section for approval. And there's deadlines for that, we are well in advance of the deadlines. It's like a May 1st deadline, so we like to.
I just got a question when I was looking at this about when they look at the enrollment, it's confusing to me because our school, I can understand the number and then I don't understand, like, do they take a percentage?
They take a percentage of it, yes. That's how it works.
Okay.
But again, our initial thinking was that we were actually kind of excited about it in our initial conversation because to move to Class C would also bring us closer to home. I mean, right now we travel to the ends of the earth for, for football games. Class C would be a little bit, would put us playing schools that were a little bit closer to us. But that did not happen based on our enrollment.
That could change.
That could change, it could. But right now we'll spend another year in Class D and Class D's tough. Yeah, you got this, you got, yeah.
You got state champs.
Yeah, you got Cambridge there and we play Cambridge, so it's a tough division to be in, their class to be in. But both schools are very excited about the opportunity to take the success of the modified JV level and move it to the varsity level. With stickers on the handles, decals on the handles.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Next is the annual budget hearing. Motion to approve the, this, hearing?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
This is the one we, yes.
I dropped out all the other ones and then I didn't change the front one personally.
If everything else was okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? This is UPK 3, but we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Pick one, just pick one.
I'll pick Mark because he hasn't done any.
There you go.
Would you like to give us a little background on this one?
If you recall, that we were the recent one of 25 recipients for our UPK 3 grant. Earlier this school year, we chose to partner with Fullmont Agency to provide the service for us. So this is our agreement with them to operate the program. And if you have not been down to see this class, you really need to call Ms. Ward and go visit this class. They are the cutest things going. And it's just a delightful class and they're doing very well and they're just the cutest communities.
I guess I thought we had talked about that there were going to be six students and I hear that there's 14 or something like that.
Oh, no, it was 14, no, that, no, that, it started full. No, by the time we started, there was only going to be six.
Well, no.
It's only a number that you should have.
Well, probably. It's not the number we had. But anyway, so no, they started, we started full. And we have, Ms. Ward and I have monthly, we've established regular meetings with Fullmont and their staff and they've just been great partners to work with, so.
I just have one more question, somewhere in here I thought it said 90 days. Is that 90 instructional days? Was that part of this one?
Yes, it's 90 instructional days, yes, because of the.
Which is the day that they started the program until?
Pretty much about.
July, July, June.
Yeah, because we didn't start till end of January, so it's a half year. This year, it's a, it's a contract for a half a year.
And we had to put a number of days in there, we had to.
We did, yes. We have to.
Right, 90 days, for the green one. Oh, okay, okay.
I probably just, we probably discussed this and I just haven't forgotten it, but I was just wondering, what is the thinking to have a contract with Fullmont or rather than us hiring? I was just wondering, what is the thinking to have contract with Fullmont for, rather than us hiring our own staff and doing our own program?
Okay, so one of the reasons is that they have, they have a structure that allows them to go out and get students because of their Head Start experience. So they're family coordinators, don't they call them?
Family advocate.
Family advocate. That is a structure that, well, that's one thing. That's a great thing. The second thing is they have experience doing this. They run a center in Amsterdam. Ms. Ward and I went to visit where they provide this service for Amsterdam as well. So it's in their wheelhouse of things to do. They have the experience. They have the structure already set up. But this family advocate piece that they have is a really great piece. That's how we started with fourteen. I think we have stellar, they have the stellar, in the Head Start class that we house and also the UPK three. It's excellent staff.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And then we have the number of policies. If you want, can we do a consent agenda on those?
If you would like.
If you would like, and then we can discuss any and all before we vote.
I make a motion for consent agenda?
Hold me one second, please.
Make a motion to waive the second reading, also these revisions.
So we need a motion to approve first, and a second. A motion to waive the second reading?
You can make a motion to waive the second reading and then.
I make a motion to waive the second reading and to do a consent agenda.
Second, both?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Just the one in particular that maybe we do a little more discussion on is the public expressions at meetings. If everybody took a look at that. And your thoughts about how that now reads? Rachel, sorry.
I'm not comfortable with the math. I just, I, I think, I understand we only have limited time to meet, but I don't think that I'm actually. You know?
I don't know.
I guess we'll.
Six people speaking.
That's the table.
We're allowing six people to speak, if I believe. And if it's an, to me, what I was thinking about, if it's an issue where it's going to take over thirty minutes, then it's an issue perhaps. If it's one thing and many people are talking, then it's something serious enough or gets enough attention that. I don't know. I just, I saw that and I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable with that thought.
I guess our thoughts as we, as a policy committee to discuss that was that it would potentially keep points a little more precise that if there was really an issue, that you would have come to the administration and or superintendent before the meeting, which has always been our goal.
Right.
Have, you know, something serious that was, you know, whether it was a personal issue with your own child or whatever, that you would come to administration and not, you know, perform, use it as an attack form, which is, you know, sadly sometimes how things have gone. And so, I mean, I don't know. It's, that's, this is up to everybody. This is not set in stone by any means. You know, if you have a different ideas, I'm open to different ideas. And I think Scott would agree, and that's kind of why you came up with that.
I know, I originally, at least for the second meeting, had talked about, but I kind of agree with Rachel. I think, and I would she expressed that, because I think the number of times when you've actually gone beyond thirty minutes is, I could count on one more hand, I think, you know, in general, there's a few people that might want to speak in over fifteen, twenty minutes at the most. And like tonight, nobody's. I think even when there are people who want to speak, it doesn't take up that much time. And I think this kind of, it does give that impression of trying to, you know, limit people's ability to express themselves, even though in fact, just realistically, that, you know, approach their needs most times. So I, I would kind of view that as a, if I figure out.
I just thought it sent a message of that we don't. To me, it just seemed too restrictive.
Sure. And you like about it all?
Well, I like the idea of people saying, I have something I want to talk about. And people, not making an appointment, but letting Patty know they're coming, you know?
Right.
Something, signing up on the sheet, I think that's a good idea. I think if there's six people here and they each speak for five minutes, we should be, maybe the group of twelve should have their six best speakers come forward. It's probably going to be about the same topic, I think, rather than people coming in and repeating.
Well, I guess that's what we were thinking.
Exactly. But here we go, you know?
And it's the same thing again.
And it is. It's the same topic when school to come to speak. So put your best foot forward and.
That's, I guess where we were going, and in particular, you know, we can all probably remember a meeting where we had an open mic thing for about an hour and a half, and there was a group here to do a presentation and had to sit through that. On that being said.
Right.
There's been some discussion between us about changing the whole, you know, agenda to move any special presentations to the top and have that first before we have questions and comments. We could do that on an individual basis, and maybe that's something we should, maybe that's anything that has to be in policy. That's really important, you know, as we put the agenda together, that we can potentially shift things around. I don't know, just thoughts and how we want to have a policy, that's up to you.
Just something for the board to consider also. We did, we did make a procedural, the policy committee did put a procedural piece in this that says you will sign up and indicate that you want to speak.
Right.
So that in and of itself would help give some structure and some form to the process of public expression. And the second piece is that the board can always choose to, if you chose to have a time delimitor on it, you could always choose to extend the time as well.
We could do that at any time, at any meeting.
Sure.
This is a general. Right, this is a general sort of policy limit. It can be amended by the group at any time for. Any particular meeting at any particular time. You know, if something special came up, then we need to, we need more time than that thirty minutes. Then you guys all approve the extension of questioning. Or at seven thirty, when the half hour is up. You could all say, no motion that we continue to hear, or we can. So it's a general guideline, but it could be amended at any time.
Those were our thoughts, which is why we put it in there. In particular, the whole signing sheet, yes, to keep it a little bit more organized and it's just not a f-hazard. And typically, what happens in those, in those kinds of processes, that the district clerk gets the sign-in sheet at the beginning of the meeting and then kind of announces who the people are who have signed up in order to speak. That's a typical procedure.
Just keeps it a little more conjunctional.
And the people that are speaking are people that really need to speak here, that have already gone through the proper procedure.
We would hope so, but you know, that's not always been the case.
Exactly. Try to have the person who's up before, and then come here when you really need to.
We do encourage everyone to follow the communication chart.
Yeah.
But again, people, part of the board's responsibility is to listen to the community. We try to encourage that to happen. That doesn't always happen that way.
Right. We try to encourage it.
So your thoughts, if you want to have a little revision, or it's up to the rest of the board?
Keep the indicate on the sign-in sheet and, and the thirty minutes total time. Or add some kind of clause that we add, maybe.
What's your thoughts on it? What's your thoughts about it? I'm open to whatever, and since Scott's not here and he's the other member of the policy committee, I don't have a problem tabling this one, and we can go back and revisit if you want to think about some other alternate ways to. Revise this.
Well, I, I mean, we could do one of two ways. I mean, we could approve it without the last part, that the maximum, and then think about it, maybe add that to a future meeting. And then put the others, the other part in force, and you could sign off and so forth. Which I think would be a good idea. It just gives us time to think about it. We can always add if there is a bit of time to think about it.
Okay. Have you guys seen the previous project?
Yeah.
Okay. Revision. So we can have some revisions. Um, the others we do with just some, if you look at. We just some wording on community relations. Our Cal Center, we changed the wording on that one, correct?
Yes, we just changed stage manager to assigned faculty, because we don't have a stage manager per se. But we do have assigned faculty members.
And that was the updated version after we saw it last, correct? Confidentiality of computerized information was just wording there.
Change is recommended by.
By Erie Landos.
By Erie Policy Services. Threats to my own school is a little bit of an update.
We did, the change strikes some words. But I think the important thing here is that adding any persons on school property who are made aware of things are to report it. So we really kind of took it to, if you're on our property, you see something, say something. And that was the policy committee's recommendation.
Correct.
And also that we kept the wording the same throughout, that we use the code of conduct of the King James Church School District. So just kind of wording on it, but just to keep it all the same.
Okay. Public school food service program. This was all things that we were already doing. It was just never in the policy.
This.
Under the child nutrition program part, that was all. Things that have been happening has been part of, maybe the regulation part, but it was never in the policy, so.
Right, and there's a requirement that this is a part of the board policy. So I think the important thing about this policy is, number one, we do not let children go hungry. We do allow them to charge up to a certain limit, regular meals, and then after that, they do have the option of a peanut butter and jelly or peanut butter and jelly sandwich, fruit and milk. That's the minimum we can do. And then Mrs. Dawn Brody works on getting letters out and helping families make sure that they're keeping up to date with their responsibilities for the school for breakfast and or lunch. And that's what we do. If it's warranted, we'll help him to fill out a free reduced lunch form if that's warranted, or we'll work with families and try to reach out with them. You do, sometimes do hear stories where, you know, schools will just say, kids, you can't have anything. No.
That doesn't happen.
That doesn't happen here, and it won't happen. So.
Any further discussion on any of these policies? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, next we have, we need a motion to appoint, approve the appointment of these inspectors for the transportation referendum coming up on March twenty-fourth.
We do them all together?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion, we do them all together.
Set the agenda on approval of these three people. These are not new, any of them, correct?
No, they've all worked with elections. The box hold before or the general, annual.
They're returning inspectors.
Excellent.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Maybe anything else under old business?
Took it up to the top.
Yes, we do. It's not old business, but Michael informed me that tomorrow was a blood drive.
Oh, yes.
In high school, and I get a phone call every day from the American Red Cross because I'm lucky enough to have all positive blood. So, when I'm done with work tomorrow, I will be up to donate some blood.
All right, I will send you to a motion to recess into executive session and face the person discussing qualification. I'm looking at the persons in deliberations on or discussion of any matter made confidential by federal's table. Correct.